Okay, let's call them in. It's Tuesday, April 17, 2018. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like everybody stands up before we even call them in. These days I'm a deviator. We'll let Jeff say a prayer first.
You can sing his happy birthday.
Is this his birthday?
Today.
Whoa.
Are you seeing on the calendar?
I know.
I've been trying to get an holiday for the last four years.
That doesn't mean like you already celebrated by buying your brother's birthday presents.
Yeah, but I did. Celebrated Friday and Saturday.
Okay, minister reports received and filed.
Um, none.
Okay, commissioner committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
I got canceled tomorrow. Then there's a community leaders breakfast. The Jeff City High School Student Council hosts tomorrow morning. I cannot go.
I'm gonna go.
Okay. Yeah. It's always a good time, interesting conversations with the young men and women there, so I'm gonna be missing it's good breakfast and some good kids to talk to. Uh, Chamber Connection is Thursday evening. I'm not sure where at.
Uh, Chase Hemmings, I think.
I think I remember seeing it on ESPN now. That's about it until next week.
We should be meeting, uh, Michael Kenner or something. I got from, uh, Red Lake Keller.
Yeah.
On Friday.
I'm meeting Thursday.
I got a, uh, I got some kids coming over for the courthouse and old jail tour Saturday. But that's all I got.
I got CAP Region Board meeting tonight. I'm gonna go to the community leaders breakfast. I'm gonna be with Michael Thursday. Saturday you can go to the First Christian Church Boy Scout Pancake Breakfast. I'm gonna be on Hal Dooley's program on KWS. And then it's served Jefferson City, too. Although I can't, I gotta work, it's prom, so that's all I've got. Okay, bids and contracts. Bid discussion, awards, 2018-16, nineteen thousand GBW cab chassis bed and accessories.
We received three bids. Lowest base bid was Capital City Chrysler. That's seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents. Public Works would like to add one of the pieces of optional equipment, the spreader. So the price we're looking for approval on today is eighty thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-five cents.
So what's the difference between the material spreader and the different option for the four cubic yard spreader?
One's a little, one's a little bigger spreader and one's a little smaller. The little smaller one is on there, it's a different brand and it's not nearly heavy enough for what I think we need to use for. So I would just assume take the swatching one, which is a better built spreader and has a lot of every trade on it, just a better spreader all the way around.
It's got the pre-wet system for the calcium that you're spraying on it?
Yes. What was the difference between that and the one that Butler bid? That's the big price difference, wasn't it? I really don't know how they come up with that number on their bid. I'm kinda curious to have myself because they all use, they all use napkins for their bed and their center spreaders and all that stuff. So where'd they come up with that six thousand dollar number from? Doesn't really make a difference, I was just curious if you did. I don't know why they, where'd they come up with that big a number in their bid from?
Assuming they're all diesels?
Yes. If they're all diesel, then they all need specs on them.
Good.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, it's a Dodge, it'll be all right. I like my Dodgers. You'll be up there circling with your wife out there, too. Well, this is the first year we've actually got a Dodge bid, so we'll try it out.
Hopefully it'll be a good one. I move that we award the cab chassis bed and accessories to Capital City Chrysler.
All in favor?
Aye.
Twenty eighteen dash twenty-five lean and title search services.
We put this out for the collector's sale and we received two bids, Cole County Abstract and Midwest Huddle and Escrow. Cole County Abstract was the lesser of the two and therefore the recommendation. If you entertain the recommendation, I have a contract also. So Cole County Abstract, years one, two, and three for the cost per record information report, a hundred and seventy-five dollars compared to two hundred from Midwest Huddle and Escrow. Any updated record report, Cole County Abstract, one hundred dollars compared to Midwest's two hundred.
Okay.
It just opened as soon as you all. It knew you were good and it got scared.
I move that we award and sign the contract for lean and title search services to Cole County Abstract.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You had your baby today. You could share, we could have one heck of a birthday.
That'd be a deal, wouldn't it?
She used to see me at Christmas, though. I'm sure that's enough.
She's past due, so. Yeah, that's just an observation. Okay, twenty eighteen dash twenty-six.
She's not pregnant, Sam.
Oh, my gosh.
Abatement of twenty-nine thirty-four, Landing Creek.
The Health Department probably has discussion on the property itself, but strictly speaking of the bids we received for the cleanup, Capital City Lawn Care was the lowest at three thousand ninety dollars and therefore the recommendation, there's a contract for that if we proceed with the abatement.
Can I speak?
Yes.
I'm here for my girlfriend. He's been in the hospital for two minutes. He's got a infection in his bloodstream. We've been trying our hardest to get that cleaned up. We've done a lot with it. If you guys could give us an extension, I know this is really asking a lot of you, but we are moving and we will have everything out of there. I promise.
When are you moving?
We are moving to ten seventy-three Brooklyn Highway.
No, I mean, when?
We have already started moving. We've gotten a lot out of there. We've gotten the motorhome out of there, the trucks coming out of there today. I've already sold the boat in the back. The guy's supposed to pick it up today. The tires are supposed to leave today. They've been sold. A lot of it is already gone. And like I said, I do apologize and I know it's asking a lot of you guys, but, and I'm leaving straight from here and going straight there and starting working again. He's at home right now and can't even leave the house. He's at home, on home, on home healthcare.
How much time are y'all looking for? I'd rather let y'all have the opportunity to clean it up. So I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with the extension, I just wanna make sure it gets done instead of just prolonging it.
Yeah, 'cause the pictures I've seen, the pictures I've seen, it doesn't look like anything.
Yeah. A lot has been done, trust me. I'm thinking maybe three weeks, if you could give me that much.
I mean, I've been by there when y'all were out there working. I know it's a mess to clean through it and then have to haul it off, so. Weather's not been that great to work with, so hopefully next few weeks.
I've got guys that are willing to come help me. I hired them already. I mean, I haven't paid them yet because I don't know what's going on here, but they are willing to come help and it has been pretty much just me trying to do what I can.
So when you move all of this?
Everything's going. Everything. We're fixing to sell the property, too.
I saw the pictures yesterday and he emailed them to us, so.
Yeah, we are fixing to sell the property, too. So we're gonna clean everything off, everything's coming off of there. Probably even the motorhome, molder home, or the mobile home.
I mean, I'm fine with the three weeks and we just make that the drop dead date.
Okay.
If you guys are all right with that, if...
Yeah, three weeks, but that's it. I mean, that's it, 'cause this is...
Yes, far and long beyond hyper, I think. Do you can give me the three weeks?
Your thoughts, anything in particular you wanna add?
I mean, if you guys are good with the three weeks, I mean, I'll go with you. I mean, I was just thinking that I'd like to see progress and so, um, anyway.
Um, three weeks is drop dead. I mean, it's, it's, yeah, this...
All right, I'll make a motion. We grant the extension for three weeks.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You'll never see it back, I promise.
Cinco de Mayo.
If there's not an agenda, start one.
Blue in there for May eighth.
Yeah.
That'd be the Tuesday following, right?
Okay, approval of the twenty eighteen Jefferson City area Chamber of Commerce contract.
Is this the first two weeks or first two weeks, first two quarters or are we doing it for the whole thing?
It's for the whole year.
For the whole year, for this year.
We have the contract with them.
Do we have a contract from the chamber?
We do.
Okay.
But I didn't know you were all ready to sign it. I'll get it.
Just skip around here.
Okay, we'll go, signing a contract for bid number twenty eighteen dash twenty-one, flooring.
We did the flooring last week, obviously. Whenever we left, we had some questions, so I should probably give you the answer to those now. We had asked for the add deduct for the alternate material that we accepted. It's five thirty-five per square foot and that includes all materials, prep and labor. Prep was included in their bid and then as far as getting any extra cartons, Greg had suggested we get six extra boxes of vinyl for the Health Department and one for ESB. Total, that's two hundred and fifty-two square feet at Health and forty-two at ESB. Do we feel like that's enough? And, uh, I can't read my own notes here. So that'd be one thousand fifteen if we feel like that's enough for the extra vinyl. And then the carpet, he wanted one extra box at ESB and that would be seventy-two square feet and that's two hundred and one dollars and sixty cents.
Okay.
But anyway, here's the contract for what we approved last week.
So over and above what we had on the bid?
If you wanna have extra boxes, 'cause remember, I don't think we realized at the time that you can heat those up and remove them if you want. So I think that last week we discussed it might be a good idea to have a few extra, but that's your prerogative.
So if we wanna order another box when we're done, so we have extra, chances are we're gonna have extras left. So you don't bid this down to the square inch. So I think just wait till we're done and then find out. If we don't have any left, then we order another box then and hold them instead of ordering an extra box and now we got two or three left over. I don't know how much I'll fall. A lot of times you have about ten percent on there and so there may be plenty left on a job this big, so.
Could be, but could cut pretty tight, too.
Well, where they bid it, they may take any extras home with them, I don't know. So, and I'm sure it is bid pretty tight, too, but...
Mm-hmm.
And I don't see anywhere in here where it says how many boxes you get. They're just gonna put flooring in and if it doesn't take as much, I'm guessing they probably take it with them, so we might have to just get a box when it's done or find out how they do that. And then I wanted to clarify, too, we didn't give it to the original bid, we went with the alternative bid.
Right.
We did have some phone calls about that and the alternative bid was...
Did your kids make up?
Twenty-four hundred more.
Yeah, I don't have the bid tab in front of me to...
Twenty-four, roughly.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure that out on here, but it was a little more, but it also had an enhanced, uh, system or whatever that protected it, so it's gonna be more scratch resistant and have a texture on it, so it's more ADA compliant, 'cause we have some complaints about that, so.
No, we went with the best, so.
Yeah, it's the lowest and best and you determined the lowest and best, so.
Do you wanna get the extras in from the get-go or you wanna wait?
Well, my only concern is that, I mean, obviously there's probably runs of different flooring and, I mean, and then I don't know if shipping's gonna be, I mean, I'm sure all of the, all of it's probably coming in special order 'cause they don't stock any of it, so. Um, I mean, I see what you're saying. I mean, normally you'd order ten percent extra, but depending on the job, you know, and how many cuts and how well you try to salvage and piece it in and everything else, I mean, so you could have ten percent left and I'm sure they don't probably want it unless somebody's got a job for it or, but ten percent of how many thousand feet is probably quite a bit.
I don't know, you're more the expert on it.
I mean, I'd say there's probably gonna be more than enough in scrap that we could salvage. Is that kinda what you're thinking?
I'd rather have some left over, but I also don't know if there's full boxes left over that they're gonna leave them. 'Cause does it say how many boxes we're getting? It says they're gonna put the floor down and they're gonna haul it off. If it's scraps, they're gonna throw it away. If they're full pieces, they're gonna probably leave a broken box there for us, partial, so...
So none of the bids included extra boxes for the vinyl, because again, I don't think we knew at the time you could heat them up and remove them, so it would've been the same either way. I know that she said if you order them separately, it would be a little higher. I don't know exactly how much, 'cause you're ordering it in the bulk for the job, you know?
I mean, it makes sense to have them on hand because you can't pull them out individually.
I think for the Health Department, we'd probably opt out and just go ahead and order the extra just to have, 'cause it's a big, it's a big building. I'd hate to see.
I mean, I'm fine with it. If you wanna get a box, it's not in the whole scheme of things, it's not that much.
I mean, I guess we could also stipulate that all material is ours to keep. I mean, it's figured in the job, we should, we should be able to retain what we want.
I can go ask them. I can try to call them and see what their intentions are.
When they submit a lean waiver, it's gonna be for all the material, it's not gonna be for whatever they used.
Well, the bid says this much floor, they're gonna cover it. It doesn't say that two hundred boxes and if we only use a hundred and ninety-two, y'all get what's left, so I don't know how she bid it.
Right.
I mean, we can call her and clarify it, too, and find out, you know, if there's an extra box we want, we would like to have it, how she's got it bid. And it didn't specify, it just says this cover next amount of square foot.
I can go call her and probably come back before you're done with this, if you want. Do a meeting.
I don't think it hurt to clarify, just tell everyone we want to have an extra box when it's all done. We don't want to pay extra for one, so extra shit's not even handling anyway. We need to add it to the bid, then.
Well, again, the extra wasn't included on any of the bids. We didn't ask for it for the vinyl.
Right, I don't think, I think we're talking about something separate. I mean, obviously they're, they're ordering X amount of material to complete the job.
Right.
Is that material ours to keep?
Right.
What we deem as, was extra?
Right.
Um, I mean, 'cause I, I would assume that it would be. I mean, they're not gonna give you credit for it.
Well, and I, yeah, I don't imagine them keeping it. It wouldn't be that much to complete much of anything else, I wouldn't think, but I can go check.
I mean, obviously we don't wanna pick up all the scraps, but I mean, if they got material left that's in good condition, we'd like to retain, obtain it, so. Yeah, maybe if you could check and then we'll...
And the contract is separate, would be separate from that?
Discussion.
What's that?
It's attached there, the contract on the original.
The contract for the original, yeah, the flooring that we've approved is there.
Mm-hmm.
And then if we did something with an extra box, it would be separate of that contract.
Right.
So...
I guess what I'm saying is that I'll sign the contract if it includes all the material that they order for the job. I mean, they're gonna make us pay for it as, as would everybody.
Well, I'll just go call her real quick.
Be nice. Be nice.
Oh, I will.
Okay, let's come back to that.
Okay, I got the, the, uh, Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, yep.
Two copies.
Okay. I move that we sign the agreement with the Jefferson City Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Approval and signing of summer feed service program inspection participation agreement.
Hello, so this is just an agreement with Department of Health and Senior Services that will go in and inspect those kitchens or schools that have been approved to participate in their summer feeding program. And from what we've heard, Jefferson City is not signing the agreement, so we will be doing the inspections out in the county and in the city this year. So we get reimbursed on a per inspection basis for this program.
What, what'd you say about the city's not signing it?
The city is... I'm not sure. I mean, usually there's only one or two, so I don't know if they just feel like they don't have time or it's not worth it, but they're not signing this year, so we will be doing those inspections.
So we do get reimbursed for them?
Yep, per inspection.
What's the, what's the fee structure?
Uh, we get reimbursed at a rate of a hundred and twenty-five dollars for each approved initial inspection for the kitchen and self-prep sites. If it's just a vendor, like a vended site where they don't actually prep there, they just distribute it, it's eighty, it's eighty dollars, excuse me, for each inspection.
And is this just for the schools or...
Um, I think some of the churches might do it, too. They have to apply and it's, you know, just for a special, for the summer to make sure those kiddos that don't have meals at home can go and get meals there, so, just a special summer program. I don't think we signed it last year 'cause we didn't have any out in the county.
Okay.
I think this year Russellville might be doing it and then I know that East School does it, and then like I said, the city won't be doing their inspections, so we will.
And is it just strictly schools?
Sometimes churches, too.
Okay, but it's basically somebody that's...
Like has a daycare, things like that, childcare.
Daycare, childcare, soup kitchen, any of that?
We usually inspected it for the city, sorry, Chris.
Who did?
Yeah.
Um, Dave Grauner's program, so Laura Pringer or somebody like that. The same people that do the restaurant inspections, they would usually do that?
The fire trucks?
No.
No, the restaurant inspections.
No.
So this doesn't include, like, special events, like...
No, this is just special summer feeding sites.
Okay.
They have to apply and be approved and they get special, I think they get like money from USDA or the Community Food Nutrition Assistance Program to provide these meals for kids.
Okay. Is that you?
I see.
Got other, other questions or you did?
I'm just trying to figure out why the city's not doing it, they're on...
They, um, when I talked to Dave Grauner, he said that he didn't, it was dollars driven. He didn't think it was worth their time and effort to go and do it.
So they're gonna make us do it. Well, that makes sense. If it doesn't make money for them, then let's make the county do it. Absolutely. That's like our sidewalks. I'm done.
I'm good with it.
Well, I'm just saying. I said I'm just saying so I could say what I want to say.
Food inspections are unfunded, maybe.
With all due respect.
Gosh, I don't know what to worry you, Kate.
Get him a candy bar. He's already hangry.
Hi, Ray Carvett?
No, I've got my Snickers up here, I'm okay. All right, I'm, I'm fine with that, just...
I move that we sign the contract for summer food service program inspection participation agreement with DHSS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Just for clarification, Jeff said he has part of Cole County.
Yes, we are going to postpone the approval of industry track agreements with Union Pacific till May first, so now we've got EMS.
So you'll recall, last year, we were approached by St. Mary's to have a contract for ambulance service where they're on the, on the hook and they're financially responsible to transfer patients between their hospital and another facility and back. Just, that stalled in the process and now we've had another request from Capital Region to do the same thing. Specifically, they take their inpatients and they take them to the Southwest Campus for treatment and bring them back. And right now, they're paying full price and they've asked us to contract with them for a reduced rate. So I guess I have two questions. One is, is this something you would like for me to proceed with and work with CAP Region? And then second of all, we'll need to at some point negotiate what we're going to charge. And we cannot legally charge below the Medicare allowable rate.
So is, uh, is St. Mary's still transporting people to JCMG for certain services?
Not much, very rarely.
But some?
I'd, I'd have to look. Obviously, if we did this for CAP, we'd have to offer the same thing to, to St. Mary's, but I, it just doesn't seem to me that we're doing those like we used to. They may have moved that treatment inside the hospital. But I can certainly look in the database and see.
So, why would we, why would we give them a discount?
'Cause we're being good community partners.
Okay, so what are they gonna do for us?
I don't know, that would be something we would ask through the negotiation.
I mean, I just, if I was gonna go ask one of my vendors to reduce my price, they'd say, well, buy, buy four times as much. So, I mean, I just, I mean, obviously if we're gonna be a good partner, there's, there's some give and, and some take on, on both sides. And then, of course, I'm, you know, I'm concerned at how this is gonna affect our, our revenue side, too, and, um, so, I mean, I realize it is a short trip. So, I mean, I realize it is a short trip. You know, for me, some of that is, is, you know, or how much time are you gonna give us to schedule these things, are you gonna schedule them when we're not normally at peak times? You know, I realize some of that stuff can't be, you know, it happens when it happens, but, uh, you know.
Most of these are scheduled a day ahead. Or, uh, repetition, uh, they need treatment Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or something like that.
Is it one we just use the transport on?
Mm-hmm.
And we all need like the ALS or BLS or anything?
Well, it depends on the patient, most of them, at most, just have an IV, uh, they're pretty, pretty simple transports, as transports go.
Have they used us for all of these before, or they called those out to be from other ambulance services?
They used us exclusively, and to be honest, if, if we did contract with them, I would, I would have exclusivity built into the contract, that they could only call us.
I think we've had reports of them calling out to get other services before, what were those for?
We, we have, I think we've gotten that addressed, we've started having quarterly meetings with them to discuss a variety of EMS hospital-related issues, but one of those specifically was transfers, and I think that was low-hanging fruit, if you will, it was just an employee here or there that was acting on their own. So I, I'm pretty confident that that's been addressed.
I'm, I'm okay with a negotiation, but I mean, I, I just think that the negotiation has to be, has to gain something for us too, I mean, you know, if we're gonna, obviously, if it's gonna be a negotiation with one hospital, it's gonna be a negotiation with both hospitals. And so, you know, to me, scheduling transfers, long-distance transfers, overnight, you know, some, a lot of the issues that we have with them, um, this needs to be addressed in the contract. You know, we're, we're not gonna do long-distance trans, transfers after seven o'clock at night, and some of these transfers need to be scheduled so that we can plan a little bit. So, I mean, I, I think all those are part of the negotiations and, you know, getting everybody at the table to understand that, look, we got our challenges too. While we could possibly give you a discount, we need these things, so, I mean, it's not just, give me a discount.
Right, I get it.
I have to, I'm staying on the board, but, but these are basically, there's no beds at the Southwest Campus, you've got the Goldschmidt Cancer Center, so it's taking a patient over for treatment to, to the Goldschmidt Cancer Center and then taking them back. So all of this is really within a mile of, of, uh, South Ridge, it's, these, these are mainly, I think, daytime, and it's, um. But it's, it's just transporting patients for treatment and then transporting them back to the hospital, because there, there are no, uh, wards, hospital beds over at the Southwest Campus.
Yeah.
If it costs too much for them, I mean, who's, who's it saving money in the end? Why are they wanting to reduce rate? Most time it goes to the insurance or to the, uh, patient, so how's this?
So with, with the way that the fixed payment system works is, once, once the person is an inpatient at the hospital, they get paid a fixed rate for, for their inpatient stay. So, anything that has to be done, the hospital has to pay for, um, or has to inherit that cost as part of the inpatient stay, for example, if, I'm just throwing these numbers out, but a week in the hospital, we're gonna give you ten thousand dollars. So, um, whatever treatments, drugs, modalities a patient needs in that week, you get ten thousand dollars. So, transporting and, using an ambulance to transport them for a cancer treatment in Goldschmidt and back is roughly two thousand dollars. And so that eats away at that fixed rate they get, so they're trying to, to reduce that a bit.
Okay, that makes sense.
But that's really not our fault that they're transporting to another hospital to do cancer treatment, when maybe they should have cancer treatment at the other hospital, and then they wouldn't have to move them at all. And same way with St. Mary's and JCMG, I mean, they were taking them there to do, what, MRIs or, or something?
It was along the order of cancer treatment of some kind, and I don't, to be honest, I don't know if it's radiation, drugs, or what, but that's the cancer center, so that's where their expertise lies, I'm, I'm just making an assumption.
Sure.
But, and I, I don't know, again, I could pull the numbers, but I'm thinking maybe a dozen trips a month, something like that.
You said around a dozen a month?
About.
And, and I realize that it's, uh, it may only be one mile there and one mile back, but that's utilizing resources that we have when we could be possibly running other trips, or, or if we're too busy, we may have to give something else away, um, to schedule that. So, you know, while you're maybe given a discounted rate for somebody, I would say that expectation and level of service is gonna be fairly high, and they're gonna want, you know, want it to be done in a timely fashion, and, and so, you know, sometimes, sometimes if you want fast service and good service, it ain't very cheap.
Yeah.
But if you want cheap service, it's not very fast. So, anyway, um, so I'm okay with, with possibly moving forward with negotiations, but I, I want something in it for us. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a one-sided deal, it's, it's, hey, here's, here's some of the issues we got, and we're gonna address them in a contract, and this is what we'll do for you, but this is what you'll do for us. And I'm not gonna be unreasonable, but I, I think, I think there's a certain level of expectation that, that we've had some issues with hospitals on as far as, you know, giving us some notice to, to try to be responsive and everything else, so, anyway.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll meet with them, then I'll follow up.
Okay.
So is there times that, there are only certain times that we do the transports though, because they've only got people there to do the treatments or do the procedure?
Right, this is more or less an eight.
Busy time or?
This is an eight to five deal, this is weekday, for the most part, weekday, daytime hours, normal, what I would call normal business hours.
Cause during our busy time, I don't know if I'm gonna be so much for it, because we're, we do have times when we're down to zero status.
Yeah, it, well, to be honest, if, if it, if that happens, we just tell them that they have to wait, I mean, that's, that's all there is to it, um, and we work it in when we can work it in, but, uh, they're, they're pretty easy to do, because they're short and they're quick. Um, and even when we're busy, we can run those out pretty quickly, we can get, the time to leave the building to the time we can have the patient delivered to Goldschmidt, it's usually half an hour, forty minutes, so we can get those, those done pretty quickly. So it's not that big a deal.
Is this a, uh, is this a, is this, we're billing directly to Cap Region, not going through our?
Right, right. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
We'll bounce around, what, what, Miss Jennifer?
Um, they said because of the size of the job, they ordered about two to three percent overage, and anything that's left over is property of Cool County, so.
I'd be good with just waiting and seeing what's, what's left, and, I mean, you got three or four carpet squares or a box of stuff, I'd say that's probably adequate.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
I move that we award and sign the flooring replacement contract with Scruggs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unfinished business. New business, accounts payable, review.
I'd ask for approval with accounts payable.
So, uh, maybe that we approve accounts payable pending review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, second final reading of budget adjustment number one.
This one is for the thousand dollars, it's for a grant, uh, crisis prevention training for juvenile, I do need a motion.
Move that we approve and sign court order number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, second final reading of budget adjustment number two.
It's for sixty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-one cents, it's the Neighborhood Improvement Fund, it's the Randall Drive, NID.
Questions?
No.
Good. I move that we approve and sign court order number two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion of employment ads.
You guys had mentioned the last time we were in here about maybe, um, putting an ad in the paper for all of the positions that are open in the county, and then directing them to our website to fill out applications or for more information. So I did send you an example of, um, an ad and the cost that we're talking about for that. Just wondered, from there, if you guys approve it, I'm gonna go to the department heads, it's still gonna be on the department heads and elected officials to make sure their website has the position out there, has the data out there, we would just be submitting the ad to the paper. Once a month, uh, however often you want me to run the ad.
Wednesday and Sunday are the most read newspapers, so. I would, I would suggest we run them, you know, like for a whole week or something like that.
Right, there was different options.
You could do it, you could do it on Sundays for a month, or, uh, I checked with Janet Olesley, and that's classified ads, they charge what they, what they want, so.
So the three consecutive days, Debbie, was that any three consecutive days, or?
I would say it is, that came straight from them.
I think that includes Sunday or not? Not sure.
I would say so. Cause it's really about the same price as Sunday and Wednesday.
Right.
I, so I guess that's probably where they get, you could run it any of those days, but since those two days are your popular days, you know. Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, you could hit both of them there, because it's thirty cents difference.
I mean, I think we ought to do it, I think we ought to try it for maybe a month, try to be consistent for a month with the jobs that we have open and see where it gets us, and then, um, obviously, then we can take a look and see if we're gonna re-up it, but, I mean, the other thing is, is where's the money gonna come from?
And it could be more, depending on how many lines of departments I would have here, but based on three openings. If you're talking about weekly doing it?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'd do it at least maybe twice a week for a month and see what, what happens, but, uh, I mean, is this all gonna come out of GR probably?
That's why I kinda brought it back to you guys, because especially if you keep it going, even once a month for a year, it's gonna cost you around twenty-six hundred dollars, so.
We mentioned Jeff Alderman tonight, we might get a discount.
Jump the price.
Ask him if he wants a full color picture of him in there with it.
I mean, we could try, I could put it out to the department heads and elected officials to see if they're even interested in doing this, I know some people go elsewhere besides the paper to look for employment, I know just, I don't know, most people just go to people's website anymore, you know, if they want a job somewhere, they'll look in that. People call us, we tell them to go look at the website, you know, so. We could try it for a month, so, or see what kind of interest I get from elected officials and department heads, but again, it'd be their responsibility to put it out on their website.
So Jerry, one of them would be for, uh, paramedics and EMTs, just so you know, we would list every, every position we're looking for.
Just by title?
Yeah.
And obviously, other departments have run these ads before, you know, but to have a consolidated one.
I know, yeah, cause, well, Chris Esses was talking about running ads, so, um, you know, we could put his in too, so, and I think Greg Camp's talking, he's losing one, so, we could put that in there too, so it.
This was Jeff's idea, it was a great idea, so, it's a matter of whether he wants to pay for it or not.
What do you think?
I think try it a month, see if he was all interested in it.
Yeah.
Not enough, we do, just do it once a month, like we were talking about, you sent up prices, I mean, it's not cheap, but we're, where else are you gonna go to advertise them or direct somebody to it, I mean, there's. If they're unemployed, chances are they may not be getting a newspaper, but.
I think the Sunday paper, probably, people buy Sunday paper.
But it's online too.
Yeah.
I mean.
They'll buy the Wednesday for grocery ads, but I don't know how many, but Sunday, I think it, it may, that's your, that's your biggest paper, yeah, so.
I just don't wanna be putting three ads in there for three different departments or elected officials and spending seven hundred and fifty dollars when we could do it for five hundred dollars, so, that's why I'd just like to do it in one big ad.
You could break down the cost percentage-wise on who, who has positions in there.
Charge it back to them.
If you wanted the chair for EMS or whoever to pay for a portion of the ad based on who has titles in it.
I just seem not have to go through that exercise, and I'd say, look, it doesn't come out of your budget, we're actually gonna save money this way if we do it this way. But, I mean, that's an idea too, if we wanna do it, I just seem, we just put the single ad in there, and if they run one ad themselves, they're probably gonna put more in there and pay the same amount for their single ad. So if we do an ad, put the positions in there, the link.
I think that's kinda the way the banks do it, and I think the way the hospitals do it, they do a, a bigger ad with the different openings.
I can do that, I can, we can try it for a month on Mondays and Wednesdays, and then see what kind of, uh, participation I get from the other departments and, um.
Mondays, Mondays probably.
Just Sundays?
Yeah, I think just Sundays, I think.
All right, well, what did you say then, a month of Sundays?
Yep.
So, hold on, let me get back to my.
Sunday's only at two hundred fourteen dollars, assuming there's three positions on there, assuming a two-by-three ad.
But they can always shrink the print, I mean, you can, you can still use that same size ad and, um, adjust the size of the print.
And you might be able to take some of our emblem or seal out of there, or just.
That's not who we are.
I'm just saying.
So Sunday only is two thirteen eighty for a month, or is that Sunday day only?
That's a week, that's one week, one day. Come on, you run ads, you know how expensive it is.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, Sunday and Wednesday, just because the ads, the shopping ads come out on Wednesday too, so a lot of people get the paper on Wednesdays to get those, the bargains, coupons, the sales, so.
So do it on a Sunday and Wednesday first, or do it for a week, Sunday and Wednesday, or for a month, Sunday and Wednesday?
Well, I think, I think you gotta repeat the ad and be frequent in order for people to see it, and so, I mean, obviously, if, I'd do it for a month of Sundays and Wednesdays.
Yeah, and if you fill out a position, you, you can just drop that out and add, yeah, I mean.
Probably give the department elected official a deadline when they have to tell me, and then I go with whatever's there.
But either way, I mean, just, you gotta be consistent with the advertising so that people see it, because they're not gonna see it every week. people see it, because they're not going to see it every week, some people won't.
So do it the first Sunday and Wednesday of the month?
And do whatever.
We can try it for a month and do it the Sunday and Wednesday for a month, and then after that, just do it every Sunday and Wednesday, and people know that the first week is...
I'm okay with that, I'm just saying, yeah, so you're, you're saying what I'm, I think I'm saying is, do it for a month on Sundays and Wednesdays, and then maybe drop it back to just once a month?
Yeah, see what kind of response we get.
We'll see what kind of response, after the month.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll get an email out to the department, so...
So we can change the ad each week?
Yeah, you can.
To accommodate the...
I would draw a lot of people to our website, too, maybe, so...
Okay.
Transfer later?
Transfer later.
Change personnel manual for accrual leave.
Well, I would say, first, we've been very lucky, and the last, since we went to bi-weekly, our pay periods have been ending as of the end of the year. So what our personnel manual says is, the cap for two forty on vacation and ninety-six on holiday hasn't been an issue, but it will become an issue the end of this year and going forward. If you would look at the last page here, basically, those are the pay periods from and to. What I'm suggesting is, uh, if you look at the very bottom in pink, or whatever color that is, the last pay period of every year will now be the last time for using, the accrual will start. So as long, you see how, this year, the last pay period will be December twenty-ninth, so that's when we need to stop the accruals. That's when the system will kick everybody at two forty and at ninety-six. It won't go till December thirty-first. This year, December thirty-first was on a Sunday, so really, countywide, it only affected one person, so with the accrual limits. So what I'm suggesting is the changes in the personnel manual that are in blue, on these two forms, basically, just ending, so the accrual limits will end, the end date of the last payroll period for the year. And we'll get that notice out to all the employees. And actually, we've done about four or five years out, so it's usually around the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth of the, of the year, so as long as they know they have to use it by that date.
And it's not, it really, it's not that much of a change.
And I think it will, through BSNA, it's all about the pay period, and nothing to do with the calendar year, twelve thirty-one, it's all about the pay period. So it will make things a lot smoother here and for the accruals for the outside auditors and our auditors.
What's the pay period run, I mean, is it?
Two weeks.
Yeah, but Sunday through Saturday, or?
For countywide, it's not... So we'll put it out on the website, we'll make the change to the personnel manual, put that out on the website. So we're giving people plenty of notice that they have to use it by the twenty-ninth of December this year, instead of the thirty-first. Otherwise, we'd be mainly having to back off stuff, and that's not a good place to be.
I mean, is this going to be clarified to everybody, because?
Yeah, there'll still be some that say they didn't know, but I will send out an email, the, the email that everybody gets their pay stuff from, I will send out an email there, we'll send out the chart that I just showed you, and we'll send it out for the next three years, so. And it'll be on the website, on the employee portal, it will also be changed in the personnel manual, so if you guys have approved today. And I think this year, it amounts to a Sunday and a Monday, so if there was the thirtieth and thirty-first.
In 2021, the twenty-fifth falls on a Saturday, and so, and then in 2022, the thirty-first falls on a Saturday, so that'll be... It just gets shorter there, so people need to realize that in those later years, you could lose a whole week that you could use that vacation, especially over the holiday. I can see that becoming an issue.
It's only the ones that'll be effective, those are the ones that are at their max.
Right. But a lot, a lot of people are trying to use that at the end of the year, and so...
I think getting this out now, in April, if they're aware of it.
Right.
And then having future years out there was my intent.
Sure.
So we have them ready to go, to put out there, so...
Okay.
And it is kind of hard for some departments for everybody to take it off that time, at the end of the year, too, so...
Oh, right, but the, the key is, is don't wait till the end of the year to try to take all your vacation, or you're going to lose it.
That's right.
You guys good?
I'm good.
I move that we approve the changes to the personnel manual for accrual leave.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's two times ten years of service, so twenty years, and then one hundred and fifty years, ten times fifteen?
Two times twenty is forty, I don't know, I don't know what you're talking about.
Two times ten, during two times ten years of service, that's twenty years.
Two, 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 ten years.
That's just two times ten.
I didn't know.
Ten times ten. And then on, twelve-two subsection B, vacation is considered as for any new employee, so we're going from ninety to thirty days. I was looking at some other stuff, did you say anything about that, you're changing that, too?
I don't know where you're at, I'm changing, just what's in blue.
Section twelve dash two, subsection B. Second page of, that you gave us. You're changing that to thirty days now?
No, that was already changed on March tenth, two thousand eleven.
No, it's in red here, so...
Yeah, so, no, those are things that have changed over the years.
Only the blue changed today.
I only changed the sheets or the blue. Only the blue.
No, all right.
Okay.
Think all the red and blue and black colors.
It will become red after today, because everything, and it will have a revised date on it, as of today.
Okay.
Put it all in black, like a white, black and white.
Yes, we already voted on it, yeah, it's approved.
Okay.
I was looking at the red, too, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thought we were doing something with that.
Do we have anything else before we go into close session?
I don't think so. But I'll come up with something before we end the day, for the good of the order.
So, Mike, are you coming back with us on a report from Russellville's abatement, or progress there at some point, is that next week?
It's on the next week.
Okay. Is that a, is that a separate meeting, or?
No, it's during the motion.
Are we Wednesday next week?
You're both Tuesday, I'm...
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, you're just Wednesday, I'm sorry.
So do they have to come up here and request an extension, or if they request it?
Sorry, I'm...
We can kind of discuss it and say, no, we're definitely not going to, or, oh, they're, they're cleaning some of it up.
Wednesday next week?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to fail to show up on the right day.
It'd be fat, you know, telling you where you're supposed to be.
Yeah, sometimes I don't hear that.
Well, she thinks it's going to take some more time.
Uh-oh, Sam's buying breakfast.
I didn't even know you had a cellphone.
Okay.
You got a cellphone?
Yeah.
You just don't use it.
I texted you.
You don't text.
I just can't believe you don't text, I thought maybe you just didn't have a cellphone.
He just wasn't applying to you.
Changed my number in there, too, Jack Daniel or something, Jim Beam's calling. Are we going to be, I know, do they have to come up here to request an extension, then? Or can I just request it through you, and you can email us?
Oh, we change that, they, I thought it was the commission's requirement, when they come up here personally and ask for extensions.
I'm fine with it, but it wastes a lot of people's time if it's just formality. That is a big project, I know they were cleaning some of it up, or burning it, however you want to put it, it's getting it cleaned up, but I understand they're still going to try to work on getting some of the stuff that can be recycled, taken care of, and they just, they want to take care of it themselves, and I'd much, same as the one on Laney Creek, I'd much rather let them take care of themselves.
Yeah, me too.
And if they need a little time, I'm willing to work with them, so...
A little time's one thing, but they've had two months.
I mean, on Laney Creek, we've had over a year with...
Well, right, we've had two different abatement hearings on that, so...
I think their intentions on both of them are admirable, but I don't know how long do we keep stretching it?
Right. Yeah, we got to see substantial progress, so...
Yeah, if, if there is progress, I mean, if you want, you know, I'm more inclined to work with them, if...
But you still want them to come up here? That's, that's just what I'm asking, do you want them to come up here to request an extension, or can they talk to Mike, Mike can take pictures, say there's, there's some work being done? You know, part of it comes down to money, too, that stuff doesn't just get hauled off by itself and for free, so...
I'm okay, if, if they talk to Mike, if, I mean, you know, you're the, you're the...
Don't say that word.
But I mean, it's, you know all about fresh.
Yeah, but the thing, the thing of it is, is that, you know, is it the responsible party talking to Mike, or is it the attorney talking to Mike? I mean, we had, you know, three, four months of not being able to contact the owner.
Yeah.
I mean, the owner's the one that's ultimately liable for this, not the attorneys, not anybody else.
I still would have not spoken to you, overall, this...
Well, you're government, if I don't trust you. I mean, that, there's people like that, they don't want to talk to us, they're going to have their attorney talk to us, and I don't, can't say I always blame them, so... If, if you just want to stick with they have to come up here, request an extension, that's fine, I was just bringing it up, trying to save some time and stuff.
I'll try to be there, I know they come up here, so...
I mean, that, you know, ultimately, they had a contractor here that they could engage that was going to do it for relatively nothing and recycle all the cardboard, so, I mean... Well, I'm... I'm sure that it is, but, I mean...
They have cardboard inside. Cardboard outside was not recyclable, according to the Solid Waste Management District.
I don't know.
The contractor had negotiated, and according to them, there was some recycling.
The cardboard?
Yeah.
On the cardboard side, that's the reason.
That's what he said here, there wasn't any cardboard inside, it was all outside. And he said he was going to get sixty dollars a ton for it, that's what he said in here. So, I mean...
A lot of that's been burned.
Yeah.
There's still a lot left.
Yeah, there's still a lot left, I just don't know how much, where that's, where the balancing act is on that, you know?
I mean, I, I don't really mind if somebody contacts Mike and asks for an extension, but, you know, shouldn't have, should be the property owner, I mean, you know, if he wants to get an attorney and fight this, that's fine, we can fight it, but, you know, if you're going to make an effort to clean it up, well, then you contact the health department, make it a request, or somebody, the, the son, I, I don't care who it is, but...
I think, I, I talked to Aaron's assistant some time back when she first contacted us, my understanding is the property owner has Alzheimer's or something and is in a facility, which is why the son is taking over all of this.
Well, that's fine, I mean, the son needs to contact us and let us know what's going on, but we have yet to contact anybody that is associated with the property. I mean, they want to work through an attorney, you know, I'm...
I'll just leave it on the agenda for next week, if they want to request an extension, then, you know, you'll probably know about it. If there's been substantial effort then, and we decide, you know, email, we can tell you, don't worry about it, if they just need a little longer, then we can go from there.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Anything else?
I would like to mention, I know next Tuesday, you guys are going to have an administrative meeting with, not elected department heads.
Yep.
I don't know if it was too soon, but a lot of people have things scheduled, there will be four of them that will come, they have other things, I don't know if you want to go ahead with it, or if you want to put it off. Further in advance, maybe, that would help.
That's possible, I'd like to proceed with it, Michael Kute called me, and I just told him, I said, give me kind of a synopsis of what's going on, and a little written report, and so, if they could do that as well, and maybe we can take some notes and get it to those people, so they can, or, I mean, if everybody could kind of maybe come with a a written, a written report.
Or send their second in charge, maybe, if you want.
Sure.
If they have to do that.
I mean, because there's always going to come issues with that, so, but at least, doesn't have to be printed necessarily, but, you know, maybe email it, and then we could just send it out, and everybody could kind of read what's going on, and if they weren't able to make it.
I think Jerry had something, Larry had something, Christie? I rescheduled mine, you rescheduled it, and then Michael.
I like the idea of sending your second-in-command then, or third, let them come up and just watch sausage be made.
Sorry.
Okay, we're going to elect him the secretary, too, then, all ready.
Oh, okay.
No, it's not me.
That's all I know.
I could see this backfiring on me, so it's not going to happen.
There's a couple questions about some of the accounts payable, if you guys may want to review.
Eric, plan where your grandmother passed away, two, one hundred and two years old.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Anything else?
All right, I mean, we go into closed session, present to section six-ten-point-oh-two-one of the Revised Statutes of Missouri for Personnel Issues Sub Three.
Second.
Paul, call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know, I was reading the section stuff, and I about-thirtyed it or something, I don't know, because...